Okay, I have 7:30. We have a quorum, so we will begin the meeting. Due to the state of emergency declared by the government of the state of New Jersey in the United States regarding COVID-19, this meeting is being held by a video conference in order for the Board of Education to conduct its business. This board meeting is being streamed live via YouTube on the district website at www ebnet.org. In addition, members of the public who wish to provide comment at this meeting may do so through Zoom, a remote video conferencing system. Free direct access is available by entering URL that might have been on your screen. HTTPS colon backslash backslash. There is the URL, EPID, and the password you need to enter into your computer in order to enter the meeting. While joining the meeting, your participation will automatically be muted to ensure that there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. Individuals are welcome to provide comment during the Good of the Cause, the public portion of the meeting. The Board will hear public comments through Zoom. In order to be recognized, select the chat feature in Zoom, then enter and send your name to the meeting host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called. Individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your request. Good evening. Will the secretary please call the roll? I believe the secretary is on mute.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwann.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Yeah.
Mrs. Lex.
Here.
Mrs. Reeves.
Mrs. Reeves, you're on mute. Raise your hand to say you're here.
I'm here.
Owe it. Mr. Winston. I see Mr. Winston and Mrs. Becker.
And first we need Mr. Simmons.
Yeah.
Mr. Simmons, I'm sorry.
Still here.
And I am here too. We have a quorum. After the pledge, I'm going to ask everyone standing for a moment of silence. This silence will be observed in memory of Iliana Knebel, who passed away on May 18th after a brief illness fought with tremendous courage. Iliana joined the district in 1988 and served in many roles in numerous schools. She was a school psychologist and natural helpers advisor, who spent the majority of her time in the role of student assistant specialist at East Brunswick High School, and most recently at Holy Middle School. Iliana was a compassionate counselor who has dedicated her life to the school. It will truly be missed. Our thoughts and heartfelt sympathies rise to salute the flag. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Green beans from the Amish, which are really delicious.
A wicked stance, justification, under God, into the Lord.
Do you want those pieces of bread or not?
Please remain standing.
Take a big one. Strawberries were delicious, right? They were really fresh tasting. Their produce just looks so beautiful there.
You can be seated.
We didn't get a chance to marinate very long, are they?
I'm going to interrupt for a moment. Ladies and gentlemen who are on this meeting, please, you must mute yourselves. I cannot manage all the people that are on here, and we're hearing about fresh fruit and produce right now, so that's not part of the official meeting here. So kindly mute yourselves so that it does not interrupt the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, you can be seated. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings with the exception of executive session discussions are videotaped for later broadcast. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. We're going to start out our evening with our superintendent's report.
They're on, but how come I can't get my mom's? I got my computer on my phone.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but there are still participants who are not muted. I'm going to repeat what Mr. Juliana just said. If you are joined our meeting, please have the courtesy to mute yourself. Thank you so much. Dr. Valeski.
Thank you, President Becker. Good evening, everyone. My report tonight is relatively short, but I want to offer congratulations to Christian Azza, who was named GMC Conference Athletic Director of the Year, Alena Negron, and John Benowitz for being selected as East Brunswick's representatives for the GMC Sportsmanship Award, and Justin Yu and Cynthia Tissu for being selected as East Brunswick's representatives for the GMC Scholar-Athlete Award. And we want to give another shout out to the East Brunswick Education Foundation. They've approved to date 87 distance learning grants during the pandemic totaling $30,000, giving direct support to teachers in the remote environment, so thank you for that. Um, Mr. Julian and I were in receipt Friday of the mandated state report on the financial condition of the state budget. And we spent some time that weekend going through it. We, at this point, the Board has already adjusted our operating budget by $2.1 million, and we anticipate that additional changes are going to be required as a result of information that was shared in this very detailed report about the loss of state revenue. And currently, they're projecting at least a $10 billion shortfall in the state revenue. Of the $2.1 million that was recommended and the Board approved in adjustments to the operating budget, unfortunately, we did impact some people. We impacted some positions. But I needed to clarify some information for the public that I believe may have been misrepresented at that meeting that night. We have three distinct employee groups in East Brunswick. We have those represented by the East Brunswick Education Association, those represented by the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association, and we have individuals who are considered non-unit. They're not represented by any bargaining group. And to date, the cuts, the employee cuts, position cuts affecting the East Brunswick Education Association unit represent 2.27%. And as well during that same time, that same period for this adjustment in the budget, the cuts made to the non-unit group represent 2.41%. So we are trying hard to equalize the the decisions, these difficult decisions across, you know, employee groups if we need to go that far. These are very difficult decisions. They continue to be difficult decisions, and we are not done yet. We will be faced with more. And so I've asked Mr. Juliana to give just a recap. He has done an analysis of the report that the state treasurer did and where we think we're forecasted to be for additional decisions in this operating budget. Mr. Juliana?
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. I'm going to just quickly share PowerPoint. And so we're calling this the update on the 2021 budget. Firstly, just a quick review. One of the things that we had talked about during each of the budget presentations leading up to the final adoption, it was legislation that was passed and signed into law April 14th, 2020, and that was S. 2338. That legislation, among other things, required that the state treasurer prepare a report on the state budget financial condition, not only for the current year, but also prospectively for the next year. That report was due May 22nd. And then, of course, it also provided for the governor to present a revised budget message in August. That treasurer's report was due by last Friday. It was prepared and posted and made available, although I have to say, without any fanfare, it was simply posted to the state website. We did review it. The information contained in that report, to say that it's daunting is an understatement. As Dr. Valeski mentioned a moment ago, the state is looking at a $10 billion, that's with a B, $10 billion shortfall in revenues, substantial to say the least. So based on the information that was contained in that report, there was one portion that struck me, and that's where the report states that the governor proposes continuing to implement the school funding formula designed in partnership with the legislature without any additional funding over FY 2020 and delaying the September 22 school aid payment into October. Now, the key here is the underscored and bolded section, which I noted. That was not in the wording from the report, without any additional funding. And so what that tells me is that funding for schools would remain flat at 2020 levels. So let's take a look at that. Now, when we talk about funding, let me say statewide funding. That's not district by district funding. Statewide funding would remain flat. And so on this screen, what I've done is I've taken an extract of the state aid analysis that the Department of Education had provided. This was a February state aid analysis. And for East Brunswick, it showed the calculation for the additional state aid East Brunswick was to receive. Overall, we start at the very top with the East Brunswick's proportional share of total state funding increase. That was 49%, not 49%, 0.49% of the entire state aid plot. Then we look at the various components concerning state aid. The first line, state aid reductions, $156,359,118. Those reductions are part of the legislature and the governor's plan to essentially put districts on track to where they should be according to the funding formula. And so that $156 million represents money that is being taken from certain districts where, when the formula is run, they have been receiving more state aid than they should. And that $156,000 then is being reallocated to districts that are being underfunded. So that's one component. The next component is total additional state aid. Now, this $335 million is the amount that was proposed to be provided for next year, for fiscal year 2021, providing a combined total of $492 million. Now, based on this data, East Brunswick's share of state aid increase was $2.4 million. If we, again, recall what I said a moment ago regarding the, what was contained in the treasurer's report, the state treasurer's report, that funding, let's go back to that a moment, that funding would be implemented based on the formula without any additional funding over fiscal year 2020, without any additional funding over fiscal year 2020. So going back to this slide, that tells me total additional state aid of $335 million is gone. It will not be there. And so what does that do to us? This next slide now tells us what happens when we revise that calculation. It means our total share of state aid increase, which is based only on the reallocation of aid reductions, will be $771,000. 771,000, not 2.4 million. And so we can say that the decrease in state aid due to the COVID-19 economic impact will be almost $1.7 million to the East Brunswick Public School District, and this is an amount that we have not yet received any information on, but we will most certainly need to bridge this additional gap, which is above and beyond the gap that we have already bridged. We had said that repeatedly in the past, that when we were moving toward the adoption of a final budget, that in actuality, there would be additional changes to be made. And I think we are still on track for additional changes and moving ahead. What does this mean? So we have been, at the administration level, we have been and will continue to plan for budget revisions. We'll need to be making recommendations to the Board for where those changes will need to be made. Looking down the road a little further, the governor still is required to provide a revised budget address by August 25th. Anything can happen between now and then, for better or for worse. And we have yet to receive any guidance from the Department of Education regarding next steps, whether it be for budget, whether it be for COVID-19 issues that we need to address. It is a constant moving target, and so we need to exercise patience and due diligence in the work that we have to do moving forward. And that concludes the presentation on the budget update.
Dr. Valeski? I think you're on mute.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you still have more of your report?
No, ma'am, that was it.
Yeah, that was enough. Thank you very much. Well, this is the time of the year where we traditionally gather to celebrate our staff and some first half of the year honorees. So we wanted to let these honorees know, as well as our Years of Service winners, that although we're not able to honor you in person at this time, in true East Brunswick fashion, we are adept. My fellow board members and I can possibly end the year without noting your achievements. And please know, we will fully celebrate you and your achievement at a future meeting as soon as conditions permit. So without any further ado, the board members are going to announce and celebrate this year's honorees. We'll start with Bowman Row.
I am pleased to recognize Bowman Row's Teacher of the Year for 2020, Linda Bortnick. She's an outstanding creative math specialist who has worked in our district since 2008. I'd also like to recognize Noreen Turley, who is an innovative instructional assistant who retired from teaching at Hammerhill Middle School in 2011 and returned to Bowman Row in this new support role in 2016. Congratulations, ladies. Well done.
Central.
Yeah, that is my distinct honor. We have two special winners to share with you. Our awesome main secretary, Kelly Esposito, who served the district since 2007, addressing the needs of our students, staff, and families. Central School's Teacher of the Year is Jody Crowe. She started her career as a kindergarten instructional assistant in 2009 and now teaches our second graders with her incredible warmth and creativity. So congratulations to Kelly and to Jody.
Chidik. At Chidik School, we have two incredible staff members to recognize. First, Bronwyn Shaughnessy, an instructional assistant who brought her expertise and heart of goal to our district in 2015, and Jane Garvin, an outstanding language arts and social studies teacher in fourth grade with a special passion for writing, which she shares with her students. Congratulations, ladies. Frost.
I'm excited to present Frost Elementary School Staff Award winners for this year. First, our support staff winner, Kevin Morton, school safety and security officer, who is loved and admired by all of Frost students. And secondly, our amazing Teacher of the Year, Amanda Ryan, whose music classroom is truly the happiest place on earth. Congratulations to these fine individuals.
Erwin.
Erwin School is blessed with two amazing staff award winners for 2020. I'm proud to introduce School Safety and Security Officer, Robert Miller, who keeps our students, staff, and visitors safe, happy, and secure every day. Equally amazing is our Teacher of the Year, Jacqueline Riley, a truly gifted teacher who invokes her deep passion for fifth grade language arts and social studies instruction. Congratulations to these incredible staff members.
Lawrence Brook. At Lawrence Brook School, excellence radiates from our two award winners. First, biz ed teacher, Michael Finnegan, a positive force in the lives of every student who inspires a healthy lifestyle throughout the school community. And support staff, Lorraine Phalick, secretary who only arrived at Lawrence Brook in 2017, yet quickly dazzled the school community with her spectacular skills and personality. Congratulations, Mike and Lorraine. Memorial.
Memorial School holds a special place in my heart, and those two staff award winners will capture yours. Lauren Stads, Teacher of the Year, who expertly teaches math, science, social studies, and language arts to grow fifth graders with incredible flair. And Southern Della Flovi, a dedicated school aide who has devoted nearly 20 years of service to making everybody feel like somebody special in her class. Congratulations to those fine winners.
One Storfer. It is with great pleasure I share One Storfer Elementary School's Two Staff Award Winners for 2020. First, Student Assistant Specialist Erin Carroll, whose in-depth knowledge in school counseling positively impacts Warren's Storfers' school community. And our support staff winner, School Aid Deborah Longo, who supports and promotes social, emotional, and organizational growth in her kindergarten and first grade students with special care. Congratulations. Hammerhill Middle School.
At Hammerhill Middle School, our Teacher of the Year is Stephanie Brown, an incredible taskmaster and instructional leader. She's beloved by her students and team of support professionals. Our support staff winner is Matthew Radcliffe, who has devoted the past five years to his special sixth and seventh grade students, even attending the Fairview trip with these kids. Congratulations to Stephanie and Matthew, two true superstars.
Churchill Junior High School.
At Churchill Junior High School, our support staff winner, Secretary Joanne Tempara, is truly outstanding. Deeply rooted in the district, Joanne has worked in several schools as both an instructional assistant and secretary, and in each role, she excels. Our Teacher of the Year, Christine Smutko, lends her vivacious personality in teaching creative English, math, and history lessons each day. Her capacity to inspire learners is remarkable. Congratulations, Joanne and Christine.
And of course, East Brunswick High School.
Oh, East Brunswick High School has nearly 300 staff members, and our 2020 staff member winners are two of the finest. Alan Broadman, our Teacher of the Year, has led our students to countless model UN competitions and three national titles in the prestigious We the People competition run by the Center for Civic Education. Our support staff winner, Jason Schultz, has done a ridiculously outstanding and awesome job, highlighted driving distance learning by employing his expertise and support of our students and staff in this 21st century learning. Congratulations to these fine gentlemen.
For our administration building.
It is with great pride I introduce Jennifer Carter as the Administration Building Support Staff Winner for 2020. Jennifer joined the district in 2000 as a technical assistant in her elementary schools. After a few years, Jen was promoted to Technical Specialist and later joined the Curriculum Department, supporting student and staff data analysis programs. Innovative, creative, and a lifelong learner is how she's best described. Congratulations, Jennifer. And across town at her Support Operations Building is a Support Staff Award winner who is a key player in the Transportation Department. Teresa Nobles, our district dispatcher, is beloved by the school community. Among her best traits are her incredible communication and organization skills, which lead the department to excellence in safety, efficiency, and customer service. Congratulations, Terry.
Congratulations to all our winners. You've done an incredible job, and again, we look forward to celebrating with you and your loved ones in person. And now, we're going to present our Years of Service Awards. Danny?
I am so honored to read the names of our staff members who are being recognized for 25 years of service to our district. First, we have our wonderful second grade teacher from Lawrence Brook Elementary School, Meredith Asher. Next, English teacher extraordinaire and soccer coach Kevin Brady from East Brunswick High School. We also have the incredibly talented Jack Sibrian, who provides incredible support to his students and his colleagues and his beloved at East Brunswick High School. Our very own Assistant Principal from Hammerhill Middle School, Sarah DiMaggio Forte. And the woman who takes care of everyone, our school nurse at East Brunswick High School, Ellen Geiser. An incredibly gifted science teacher from Churchill Junior High School, Lynn Metz. And East Brunswick High School's wonderful business education teacher, Vicky Ann Patrizio. And Noreen Turley, our instructional assistant from Bowman Row, who is also their 2020 Support Staff Winner tonight. Carol Vetri, Central School's other amazing secretary, who helps to keep the office running and happy. And last but not least, our wonderful principal, Michael Vanilla from East Brunswick High School. But we have something rare and special tonight. We have Churchill Junior High School's Don Mandy, a retired special education teacher who returned to work as a school aide and has dedicated 40 years of service to our district. Don, thank you for being such an integral part of our school community. We look forward to celebrating everybody in person as soon as possible.
Bravo. Thank you again, everyone. Remind ourselves of the really nice things that we have to celebrate during all this. They're not forgotten. And now we come to the Good of the Cause for the public. As a reminder, members of the public who wish to provide comment at this meeting may do so through Zoom, a remote video conferencing system. Free direct access is available by entering the URL into the web browser of your computer and enter the meeting ID and password. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will automatically be muted to ensure there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. In order to be recognized, select the chat feature in Zoom, enter and send your name to the meeting host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called. Individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your request. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves, to protect the privacy of all students and staff. Concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. All participants will be All participants will be limited to three minutes duration. Is there anyone wishing to address the board this evening?
This is Becker. I'm not receiving any requests. Give a few more moments.
Okay, seeing none, I close the public portion. Moving on to our agenda. I'd like a motion to combine item one and two from the Board of Education. I'm sorry, who was that? Move by LeWu, second by Mark. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Moving on to curriculum and instruction. Can I please have a motion for items one and two?
No move.
Move by LeWu?
Second.
Second by Mark. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Can I please have a motion for item one on our facilities agenda?
So move, Mark.
Second.
Second, Jeff.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. For our Financial Services item, can I please have a motion to combine items one through nine?
So move, Mark.
Move by Mark?
Second.
Second by LeWu. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, but I do abstain on item number nine.
Noted.
Thank you. On our Human Resources agenda, can I please have a motion to combine items one and two?
So move, Mark.
Move by Mark?
Second, LeWu.
Second by LeWu. Is there any discussion? The Secretary please call the roll.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Can I please have a motion to combine items one to four on the Service Agenda?
So move, Mark.
Move by Mark, second by LeWu. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, I'd like to pull two, three, and four. I'm not aware of those issues, and I'd like to learn more before voting. That that would require a motion to amend. So Mark, if Jeff, if you're making a motion. Then we have a motion to.
I'll second his motion to amend.
Is there any discussion? I have a question for Dr. Valeski and our legal counsel.
Yes, ma'am.
Pulling these items, are they of a timely nature that they will be adversely affected?
I'll defer to Mr. Giacobi on this.
Right now, the motion to amend, see, what you're gonna do is you're gonna have a vote on the remaining. Once you amend it, you'll have a vote on the remaining items. And then you guys can have a discussion and answer any questions on the three motions that were just pulled off right now. And then you can vote on them subsequently. If it needs more time, then we could do that later, right? By understanding, it was just a motion to amend so that you guys could have a discussion with these three items so that the board had more information.
Right, so allow me, Mrs. Becker, also to defer on that. So so with this motion to amend, first, we'll need a vote on that, which will remove those three items. The board can have the discussion in closed session regarding any clarifications needed. And then these items would be put on for the next board meeting. The timeliness of of these issues, I don't think there'd be any issue with with the approval waiting until that point in time. I think that's the crux of the question.
So I'm asking for all those in favor on Jeff's motion to hold. Rec, Bernie?
Yes, that's a voice vote.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Same? Motion carries. So may I?
Now we need a vote on, now it's the roll call vote on the remaining item, which is the H I T report.
Yes, that I knew. Thank you. Okay. Can I please have a motion for item number one on the Student Services Agenda? Move by Jeff?
Second, Mark.
Second by Mark. Is there any discussion? Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Can I please have a motion for item one on the Transportation Services Agenda?
So move, Mark.
Move by Mark.
Second, Barbara.
Barbara. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. It's Rachel, our high school senior rep with us this evening.
I did not see Rachel.
Mrs. Becker, she had a family commitment. She is not on with us tonight.
No problem. Okay, so that brings us to committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause, board, anyone? I feel like that teacher in Ferris Bueller. Anyone? Bueller, Bueller? Okay. Seeing none, we do have a need for a closed session. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meeting Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Ed intends to discuss matters as follows. Those items listed in this evening's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be 90 minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action will not be taken. Can I please have a motion for going into closed session?
Mrs. Becker, prior to a motion, we just also need to supplement that now that we're going to have those settlement agreements, potential discussion, that those are also part of the resolution.
Okay, what he said. Can I have a motion for what I said?
Second, Barbara.
Okay. Move by Mark, second by LeWu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Be well and stay safe. Board members, relax, and enter the closed session.